Stand by for Facebook. And we are live on Facebook. That's all our channels.
Perfect.
And we are live on Facebook. That's all our channels.
I'm trying to share it. I may not make it. Bear with me one moment. I'm sharing the Facebook. All right. Hello, everyone. It is, um, it is 6:02 PM on November 3rd, 2020, and we're going to call this meeting to order. However, we do have to have a vote from this council to proceed with an electronic media meeting, so I'm gonna read this to you. It says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16, number 34, number 51, number 60, and number 65, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The November 3rd, 2020 Gallatin's key council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. If you wish to comment, you're going to wish to join the Zoom meeting, and that is located at the link that you see on the page in front of you right now. You can also find that link on our website and then also on our Facebook posting announcing the meeting. Alternatively, you may call in to participate in the Zoom meeting. You may do that by dialing 470-381-2552, or 470-250-9358. If you do that, you're going to enter the webinar ID, 816-1469-3597. All that information is available on the channels I mentioned, our Facebook page, our gallatin10.gov website, and, um, and then they're on the screen for you. Um, if you want to just watch the meeting, of course, you can do that on Facebook. You can do it on our website, and you can, um, do that on Cable Channel 19. So with that, I'll entertain a motion from this council to proceed with the electronic meeting.
We proceed electronically.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? I'm asking Ms. Kiprow to call the roll, both for attendance and for a vote on this meeting. Okay. Uh, the vote on the meeting, Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander is not here. Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. I don't know. Is he here?
Oh.
Okay. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
We have five A's and zero N's. And five in attendance, correct? So we do have a four. Correct. All right. With that, we're officially calling the meeting to order. We're gonna begin with the invocation this evening, and our city engineer, Nick Tuttle, is going to offer our prayer for us.
Thank you, Mayor. If you all join me, please. God, thank you so much for, um, allowing us to gather together here this evening, virtually. Uh, Lord, on such a monumental night for our country and our communities, God, we, uh, we look to you, um, as we know that you appoint those that are put into leadership. And Father, we thank you for the leaders that are here that are gathered, and I just pray that you would offer your wisdom, and that we would seek your wisdom, and that we would find your wisdom, um, in this meeting and in those meetings to come. My Lord, again, continue to, to guide, um, our, our city, our county, our state, our nation, um, as we, um, press forward and, and try to do your will in what we do. And while we love you, and in Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Next item is the approval of minutes, which we do not have any provided this evening. So we will move now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who is attending virtually may comment on any item that is on the evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Additionally, there is also a public hearing this evening. This is about an amended preliminary master development plan at Greensboro North. If you wish to comment on that, chances are you won't wait on that public hearing to do that, but it is up to you. With that, I'm going to say that public recognition on agenda-related items is open. I'll turn the meeting over to Jeff Henshaw, who will give you instructions on how to participate.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. If you're on a PC or a phone, that, um, or if you're on a PC, just mouse over the bottom of your screen, um, and you will see a raise your hand button. The same with the app. We don't have, I recognize that phone number, but if someone joins while we're doing this by phone, you will do star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to mute or unmute yourself. Once you raise your hand, I will, uh, call your name, and then you'll have to unmute yourself. And I do not see anyone raising their hand.
All right. We did give instructions on how you're on, if you're on the phone, to do that as well. Okay, with that, we will say that public recognition on agenda-related items is closed, and I will move now to Mayor's comments. I very simply just wanna say two things to you. Um, one is, and Ms. Kiprow may want to chime in on this. Um, um, we, or she, is working diligently on getting the taxes out. We are waiting on our formatters to actually get those back to us. We've been waiting for quite some time, and, um, we received assurance that they're coming, but we do not have them yet. So certainly, um, on this Kiprow and everybody's behalf, we, we certainly wish that they were out sooner, and I do feel like we took the proper measures to get them out, but, um, it's out of our hands at this point, and, and hopefully they will be to you soon, and certainly they will be online and to your mortgage companies in time. Um, second thing I wanted to say to all of you is that it is election day. Um, I do believe it's a time of high stress for a lot of people. Um, not all of us are gonna get the results that we want in various races this evening. I just hope that we will, um, take a moment and focus on the power that we have as a united country versus a divided country, and personally extend grace and, and compassion and kindness to, um, to each other, because there's gonna be winners and there's gonna be losers, but we're all gonna come out ahead if we all stick together. So those are my only words this evening, Councilman Hayes, and I'll move now to the regular agenda. The first item is the public hearing on ordinance 020010-47, and you're it, Mr. Hayes.
Public hearing, this ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee rezoning 47.51 acre portion of Greensboro Village PUD from the MRO PUD Multiple Residential and Office Plan Union Development District to the SP Specific Plan District in approving amended preliminary master development plan for Greensboro North Transit Ready Development totaling 196.45 acres located east of west, east and west of Greenlee Boulevard. It's a public hearing.
A public hearing is now open. If you would like to comment, Mr. Henshaw is going to repeat the instructions on how you can do that, and he will take any callers or virtual attendees for public comment. Mr. Henshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, just to revise what we just said, um, please use the raise your hand function. If you mouse over your screen, you'll see that, um, next to the mute and the rest of the buttons that will appear at the bottom of your screen. I recognize most of the participants, um, but I'll give you just another second or two if you'd like to use the raise your hand function and speak. Now's the time.
And how do callers raise their hand again?
Callers do that by star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to mute and unmute. David Brown is the 283 number, so I recognize that number, so we don't have any, any callers.
You don't recognize. And no one has raised their hand?
No, ma'am.
All right. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I'll declare the public hearing on ordinance 02010-47 closed. Item two is a dangerous building complaint and show cause notice for 548 Magnolia Street. I'm going to turn that over now to, um, Kevin Black and Susan Heimacoli.
Want me to speak first?
Yes, please.
Okay. We, uh, we have, uh, for 548 Magnolia Street, we now have, the new owner has hired a demolition contractor, and we have an application in the works for demolition, demolition permit.
So Ms. Heimacoli, that puts us in what kind of posture? Um, it's not typical that we have, um, a, a building that we're considering that has a plan in place, and so do we still assign it next, a certain number of days, or?
Just defer it for six, for so many days, Susan, right?
You can defer it, or you can tell them how long that you want them to, um, have it done by. I believe that they were gonna try to participate tonight in the meeting, so the, uh, new owner may want to try to speak to you.
Could they possibly be online versus present in the building?
Uh, it's my understanding they're gonna participate online by Zoom.
Okay, um...
We did have a, a tax processors plus that's raised their hand. Do you think they're...
That sounds correct.
Okay. I'm gonna allow them to talk.
You may need to direct them to unmute themselves.
I understand. Hi, my name is Jesse. It says tax processors plus, but I'm the owner of, uh, that's my other, my software company, but I am the owner of the developer's team, and we own, um, 548 Magnolia. So, uh, yes, we received a notice from you guys, and, uh, so we, we started the actions to, uh, get all of the utilities disconnected and, uh, and, and get an application in for demo. We've hired a couple of guys, got our quotes in, we're kind of ready to go. We were just wanting to attend to it, but you guys were complaining about what kind of timeframe we had to, to get this completed for you.
I think the question is, how long do you think you all need?
Uh, we think we can get it done within the next 30 to 45 days.
Okay. That helps us. So is there a, a motion from this council?
Yeah, let's make a motion that we, uh, give them, let's say 60 days just to be safe.
Second.
Yeah.
Uh, is the motion to defer or to add or, or to demo it within 60 days?
Well, I mean, I don't know. Should we defer it or order demo in 60 days? I mean, if they're gonna do it, let's, let's... What do you think, Susan?
They pulled a permit, sure they're gonna get it done in that length of time. He just told us he would, so...
We're gonna get it done.
Okay.
I, I think you're fine to go ahead with the demo motion.
Yeah, yeah, demo motion. All right, 60 days.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion on this or any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kiprow to call the roll for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Uh.
Councilwoman Fan?
Uh.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor five A's, zero N's. Thank you so much. It is approved unanimously, and thank you, sir, for attending the meeting and, um, taking care of this property. We really do appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item number three, which is another dangerous building complaint and show cause notice for 170 East Shell Street. Again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Black and Ms. Heimacoli.
On this property, we, uh, the new owner has hired a contractor, and they have submitted a permit application for a building permit to do a full renovation on that building.
Um, do you have any sense of how long they might need to do this? And is there, do we know if there is a participant with us this evening?
I don't know about a participant being with us, but, uh, I, judging by the nature of a full renovation, I would give them at least six to nine months.
This may be one that you want to defer. I believe in the past, when, um, Mr. Stewart has come before you, and he has a permit to remodel, typically I believe you've deferred.
For six months, Susan?
How do you see fit for them to get it completed?
I, I don't...
I see what we need to do is we probably need to defer it until like next committee meeting, but get somebody from that property to come and speak to us to let us know what their intentions are.
Well, or defer it for a period of time to which you can be sure that they are actually in the process of renovation.
I mean, would y'all not like to hear from them, though, to see what they got, what their plans are? I mean, say defer it for, to the next committee meeting?
Sounds good to me.
Do you want to make sure no one's on this call? Mr. Henshaw?
Um, sure. I, I recognize all the names here. Stephen Haight or Ted Tabbert would like to speak on this issue.
I see no indication that either wishes to speak, so, um, with that, I think a motion from this body would be appropriate. Is there...
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to the next committee meeting to at least hear from the property owner. Somebody in touch with him, and they could come back and let us know what their intentions are and how long.
I would say, if I may, that, uh, when they do receive their building permit, it is good for 180 days, six months.
Kevin, I think we just want, we just want them to come to us and tell us how long they think they're gonna do it and when they're gonna start on and that kind of stuff. We just wanna be sure it moves along. If we delay it 180 days and they still don't do it, then we're back to where we are. So I think we just wanna be sure that we know what the game plan is going forward.
Okay, we can get in touch with them and, and ask them to, uh, participate in the next committee meeting.
That's good. I'll second your motion, Craig.
Thank you.
Of course.
I have a motion.
If you are gonna put it on the next committee meeting, you can't, uh, make a proper motion to vote on if you're gonna determine it's unfit for human habitation. Might want to wait till the next actual...
That's what I mean, next council meeting, yes. I'll, I'll amend my motion, I mean, I'll change my motion. Next council meeting.
Okay, so a motion is second to defer it to our next council meeting, which would be, I think it's in two weeks, yeah, before Thanksgiving. Um, okay, thank you, and, um, any questions or discussion? All right, with that, Ms. Kiprow, you can call the roll. Vice Mayor Camp?
Uh.
Councilwoman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, five A's, zero N's. Okay, 170 East Shell Street will be first until the council meeting. Um, item number four is another dangerous building complaint and show cause notice for 219 Driver's Lane. Mr. Black?
On this property, our department is gonna recommend demolition, and I did receive an email from Jessica Jackson this afternoon. She has spoke to Mr. Hill, the owner, and the, uh, VA contact, and she recommends also trying to relocate him and demolish, demo, demolition the property because it's uninhabitable.
Mr. Black, do you have photographs or any testimony that you'd like to give the council to, for them to make a motion based upon your recommendation?
I do have photographs of the inside and outside of the property, and, and, and of course, with the lack of, uh, running water and other utilities, I do recommend that it be demolished.
And this is James Fenton, Economic Development. Um, I had requested at one point this, this be deferred. We had companies and individuals that were interested in supporting, uh, rehabilitation. I, uh, unfortunately, am reporting tonight that really is not possible, given the condition of the building. Uh, Mr. Hill was admitted to the hospital recently and was, uh, released, and no one knows where he is at this point in time. The VA and several, uh, folks have come forward to help him, but, uh, that has not been successful. And so, um, we are supportive of whatever codes decides.
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Could you please give the council, um, just refresh their memory a little bit about this property? Um, I need there to be some more evidence in the record before they make a motion to, you know...
Can we show the pictures? I mean, have we got those where they can share the, share the screen and show them?
Uh, I don't have a way to share them. Uh, they were, I believe they were in the original package that were sent out.
They are. I'm gonna see if I can access them more quickly and share my screen.
They were in our original package.
And I will let you know that Mr. Hill did accept, uh, we had the complaint. He did accept service of that. We sent it certified mail, so he did get proper notice of this hearing, and I have not heard from him.
So Susan, if we, if we take the, uh, advice and we, uh, dangerous, we declare it a dangerous building, that's all we need to make a motion on, just declare it a dangerous building at this point, is that correct? Or do we need to give a timeframe?
Uh, you need to give a timeframe, but we need a little bit more evidence in the record as to the condition of the property.
Susan, the pictures are in our package for tonight. Here they are.
I think I can pull them up and share my screen.
Yes.
Mayor, I have the pictures ready, if that's okay.
Oh, you do have them?
Yeah.
Then why don't you go ahead and share them then?
The pictures are in the package.
I understand, but this is a public meeting, and we'd like for people to understand, um, what it is we're considering so that they, so that no one thinks that we're making any hasty judgments.
Well...
And I'll ask Mr. Black to describe what we're seeing as Mr. Henshaw shows the photos.
Okay.
See my screen now?
Yes, this is the front, front of the trailer. It's a single wide trailer, for those who don't know, and this is the front entrance.
Sorry that they're sideways here, but...
This, that's the rear of the trailer, rear entrance.
Hardly believe somebody is still living in that, you know?
Believe these are inside photos now you're getting too.
And that, um, you want to discuss the stove, his heating source? Or are you familiar with that?
Uh, last I heard, he had no heat source.
Right. That stove that you saw in that photo apparently used to be a heating source, but is no longer.
Right.
There is no running water because the pipes froze, and Mr. Hill had arranged someone to come fix them, but they had not shown up, so even months later, he still has no running water.
It's a horrendously sad situation, and, and I do appreciate the efforts by, certainly, our, um, property maintenance officer, um, you, Mr. Fenton, the, the groups you try to connect him with, and, and some others in the community that are really trying to help this gentleman.
But it's really sad.
Ms. Heimacoli, is there anything else that you want discussed as to the... I mean, obviously, you saw the ceiling, you saw the floors, you saw the entrance and exit, um, lack of running water, lack of electricity or heat supply.
I think, you know, we now have sufficient evidence that would be in the record. We just have to have some evidence in the record for council to base their determination on.
So at this point, are you ready for motion for us to declare it a dangerous building? Make a motion to declare it a dangerous building.
Second.
Okay, and, and what, what remedy are you recommending?
That we, that we tear the building down? Do we have to give them a certain timeframe, Susan?
Yes. Uh... And this is likely one that our, uh, city will be demoing. If you could amend your motion to declare it dangerous and unfit for human habitation, that would be the proper...
I withdraw my motion. I'll make another one. I declare the dangerous building an unfit for human habitation, and that we tear the building down within, what timeframe do we have to put?
Well, don't we first have to give the property owner time to, um, remedy it before we actually move in and do it?
You do.
Okay.
So I would say give them X number of days, and then it is, it, it is understood that if it's not accomplished in that, then the city does have the right to, in a being...
Thirty days to my motion.
Did you say thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Overton?
I seconded it.
A, a second by Councilwoman Love. Are there any questions or discussion, um, further about this?
I got a question.
Ms. Fan?
If they're not within 30 days, if they're in the process, 30 days is, in some instances, is a little quick to get somebody to do something. They, they'd have to schedule it. Is the, has anybody contacted the property owner?
Yes, they were just out there, um, this last week. I know that.
There have been two visits within the last seven days, uh, Councilman Fan, of a company that was interested in helping the gentleman and Officer Jackson.
And I do think that if the property owner were to come back within the next 30 days and say, hey, we're going to demo it, but it's gonna take us longer, that this council would certainly have the ability to change.
Absolutely.
That would be fine. I'm just, I mean, sometimes you can schedule 30 days and they don't show up, or they're, they're too far out, but as long as we understand it, they may or may not have time to do it in 30 days. Hardly do they have the resources. That's something else we gotta know.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kiprow, I ask that you call the roll for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Uh.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes? Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's. Okay, thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 02011-48. Um, Councilman Fennell's not with us this evening, so I'll ask Councilman Fan to take this, please. Councilman Fan?
Pardon?
Do you mind taking item number five?
This is first reading, we're going on ordinance number 02011-48. Ordinance appropriating water sewer and gas capital projects for FY2021. I so move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 02011-48. Ms. Kiprow, if you would call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Camp?
Uh.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor five A's, zero N's.
Okay, first reading on ordinance 02011-48 passes unanimously. Onto item six, which is resolution R200, R2011-61. Councilman Fan, you're recognized again.
Resolution number R2011-61, resolution of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, supporting application for a multi-model access grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the development of Phase One of a multi-model facility along Nashville Pike, US 31E State Route Six, adjacent to Volunteer State Community College in the city of Gallatin. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, and that second was Councilman Hayes?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Motion is second, opening the floor for discussion, any questions? Seeing none, this is resolution R2011-61, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilwoman Thanh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilwoman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor five A C Ronays.
Thank you. R2011-61 is approved unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda this evening, it brings us now to other business, if anyone on this council has anything additional you'd like to bring forward at this time, you may do so. All right, seeing no one, we will move on forward to public recognition on non-agenda related items. Like I mentioned at the first of the meeting, this is the time of the meeting where you can comment on anything that's not on the evening's agenda. Again, we're going to ask that you raise your hand, it's going to be star nine to raise your hand if you're on the telephone and then on your computer, you're going to toggle till you see the Raise Your Hand function and you will raise your hand and Mr. Henshaw will identify you and you will have time to speak. With that, public recognition on non-agenda related items is now open.
Mayor, this is James Fenton, again, if I might, tomorrow at one o'clock, we have a groundbreaking ceremony for Boise Cascade, a company that has moved up to Gallatin, out of the Nashville area. This will be at the Fowler Lumber Company facility and location on Airport Road. And we invite all of the elected officials and of course, the public to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton, that's the corner of Airport and Hartsville Pike, so.
Just south of that intersection, yes, ma'am.
And they have a nice program planned from what I've seen, thank you for reminding us of that.
What time was that?
One o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, last call for anyone who would like to raise their hand and speak? Up, we do have someone, Stephen Pate? Go right ahead. You are unmuted, go ahead.
Mr. Pate, your hand is up and you are recognized and it appears that you've unmuted yourself, so if you'd like to speak, we would like for you to go ahead.
Maybe having some microphone issues.
Mr. Pate? Hand is down, hand is raised again, have you unmuted him again, Jeff, on your end?
He is unmuted. It could be that his microphone volume on his computer or the mic itself isn't working? Go ahead, I thought I heard something, Mr. Pate?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Hey, we live next door to 756 East Main Street and I know that the last council meeting, there was discussion about demoing the house, it had caught on fire back in June. There's drug activity at times going on next door and I just noticed that there's no, there's no mention of this on the agenda and I thought that we were giving them thirty days to do something.
Mr. Pate, Ms. Heimacoli, do you remember what the time was? We addressed that one previously and I forget the timeframe that was given to them, Ms. Love, you might remember, do you?
I believe it was thirty days, I don't have in front of me, but we would not bring it back to council because council has already made their determination that it's a dangerous building unfit for human occupation and habitation. So we gave the owner thirty days, if that was the, if I'm remembering correctly, and then if nothing is done within that timeframe, then the city can take over. I can tell you, I have not had a call, but I believe that the codes department received a call, I saw an email, Mr. Black may know about this, I think it was earlier this week or the end of last week, that perhaps that property has been sold or is in the process of being sold. I have not spoken with the new owner, but I think someone in codes may have.
I, I don't know of any new owners to that property, no, I've never heard of any of that.
Okay.
That's the one that. It was, there was some difficulty, legal difficulty maybe with getting in touch with the attorney.
It's in an estate currently.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Pate, we will see if we can learn any more about that, but to address your question this evening, that is in process, they are in their days to remedy the situation, which of course, they have the, I think they have the option that to either, you know, repair it or demo it. And if it's not done in whatever the prescribed number of days for, then the city would take over. But if you want to follow up with us, you can call my office directly, we'll try and figure out if we do know anything about a building permit or anything of that nature happening. A help?
Thank you.
Okay, what it's worth, I have on my calendar that we're supposed to begin demo on the sixteenth of November. Based on the previous show calls here.
So that would have been, Mr. Wilkinson is the Public Works Director and so he would have scheduled that based upon what the days were. So it looks like it was done in the middle of October, if he's looking at the middle of November as the demo date that the City of Gallatin would have on their calendar.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that, what was the date?
Sixteenth of November.
The sixteenth of November is what he has on his calendar as the point at which the city would become responsible if the owner had not done what they were to do, supposed to do.
Okay, thank you so much for that update.
My pleasure.
All right, Renee Saunders, go ahead.
There we go, Renee Saunders, 2092 Rodman Boulevard, regarding that property on Main Street, if indeed November sixteen comes without a resolution from the owners or the estate and the city decides to take over and demolish the building, does the property then revert to the city and how would that property be able to be purchased?
In that situation, there's actually a lien put on that property so that if it is ever sold, the city would be repaid for their work.
So would the purchase then need to be arranged in some other way through an intermediary of sorts? Or would the purchase of the property, if it referred it to the city, need to be purchased through the city somehow?
It would not, it, it does not revert to the city, a lien is placed on the property by the city, just as any other entity that's owned money would do. Then if it was sold, that money would have to be paid back to the city, but we would have nothing to do with the sale of it.
I see, so the sale would then still need to be cleared through the estate somehow?
Or whomever the owner may be at this point, we don't, we're not, we're not real clear on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appears to be all our commoners.
All right. With that, we're going to close public recognition on non-agenda related items and that, my friends, should bring us to the end of the meeting.
Most adjourned.
Have a motion to adjourn, we are at the end of the agenda, so we may adjourn, I wish you all a good evening. You have twenty-one minutes left to vote tonight before the polls close, so everyone take care and we will see you again next week. Have a good evening, good rest of the week.